We still have Echo?
Nope.
Echo's gone.
Echo's gone.
All right, great. Roll call, please. Or am I doing roll call?
Mara?
Not here.
Oh, yeah, she's not here tonight.
Hold on, she's remote, she's remote.
Yeah. Jamie, is Mara all set up on, does she have everything she needs? Okay.
Yes, she said Jamie's role call. What it is, you can always do.
Interact.
Right, somebody's here and is translating.
Okay.
And I can cut speakers on, that what she could present for.
Okay.
But I just put it on mute, so.
We might, we might need a little support from you, because the interactivity won't work for, for her.
So what I'll do for roll call is one, two, three, four, five, six. So we know we have one vacancy.
Mm-hmm.
Two commissioners absent, which is Mayor Wimberly and Commissioner Willis. Just to help you out, Mr. Garofalo.
Do you want me to do a quick roll call?
Want me to?
I can.
Okay.
Chairman Chisholm.
Present.
Vice Chair Faeson.
Present.
Commissioner Daniels. Commissioner Kane. Commissioner Willis is absent. Commissioner Williams.
Present.
And Mayor Wimberly is absent. We have a quorum. How about Commissioner Davis?
Davis is here. Yeah.
Great, thank you. We're down to item two, adoption of agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda for tonight?
Yes, I have.
All right. The floor is open for motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Davis and supported by Commissioner Daniels. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to adoption of minutes. Adoption of May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two minutes. Floor is open for motion to adopt them, or has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
All right, then the floor is open for motion to adopt the minutes from May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
I'm moved to adopt the minutes from, um, May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Support?
They're properly moved by Commissioner Daniels and supported by Commissioner Willis. Is there any further discussion? Not on the public's, for the public's view. They will be able to speak at item number four.
Okay.
No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number four, this is the first hearing of the public. This is for items not scheduled for a public hearing. This should be for agenda items. So this is time where the general public can please approach the podium to speak to anything that is on our agenda for tonight. Then you will have an opportunity later to speak to anything that is not on our agenda. Please approach the podium and state your name for the record if you feel compelled.
Hello. This is the public. President, City of Inkster.
On both these items, I think we've gone through those before. I'd just like to reiterate that, um, when someone asks for a special land usage, that means, once again, that this is not something you normally have where it is. So a person who has no ties to your community has, uh, only going to benefit from this is someone asking you to change your rules to accommodate them. That, to me, is never really a good thing, okay? The other thing that I want to say, as I said before, is this being inundated with all of these facilities, at some point, enough has to be enough. And, um, I believe there are several instances where you all can deny certain things. One of them, if this doesn't fit with the master plan, I believe I said last week, nowhere in the master plan does it say, hey, let's have twenty-five of these things come into our city. And there are a couple other issues that I assume can be addressed at a later time, but just so you know, where I'm concerned, a special land usage is asking you to violate your own code. And coming from the outside and it's benefiting no one but the person asking you to do it, you have to think, what do you want? That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is, um, Miracle Tim Kim Howard, but tonight I am a resident. And I just got the agenda, so I'm not able to really speak a lot that I would like to speak on. But I'm interested in item B, use adult medical retail metal, metal, retail medical, uh, medical marijuana. Now, is it in fact, do we have any more medical marijuana places to give?
What was the question? Do we have what now?
Do we have any medical marijuana provision centers to give in the City of Inkster as of right now?
Name of the license?
Correct.
I don't believe so. Mr. Garofalo, would you like to speak there, or?
Uh, at this time, I can't answer that question.
Okay, if we do not, because I have, there's so much stuff going on, and I don't think we have any. So you guys, when you voting on stuff like this, you need to find out what really is going on, because, um, this whole thing in item B. Now, you want to do an adult-use marijuana retailer, medical marijuana provision center, and a drive-through restaurant? Okay, so you want my kid to drive up in this restaurant with all of this stuff in at the same time? Come on now. Have you guys checked with the state to see whether or not the state would allow all of that in one area? How many feet? Have you, I mean, have you, have you guys checked that as, as, as a planning commission? Have you guys checked that? Okay, and another thing, too, um, adult marijuana. As she pointed out, I have spoken to a lot of residents, and I know medical marijuana is here to stay, but we are six-point-two square miles. If we're trying to build our city up, who's going to come in here? Six-point-two square miles, and that's all we have. You know, all of these people talking about they're going to do this, where's, where's, uh, Restaurant Rhino, Michigan Avenue? We have thousands of people to drive up and down Michigan Avenue every day, and they can't stop nowhere in Inkster because we don't have anything. So when is enough going to be enough for you guys? You know? They can build, they can buy us something. So we all can benefit. If they can't do that, then hey, let them take it where they live. That's how I feel. As a resident. Thank you.
And I can't say that some of the questions and concerns that came up at our last one, when these items were tabled to be brought back before us tonight, one of the key things was to ask our city clerk and the attorney, the city attorney to be here. An email was drafted from the planning department incorporating the concerns of the commissioners and sent over. I didn't see a response.
Okay.
Um, the planning department didn't alert me that there was a response or anything like that. Um, so I'm not sure what transpired, why the attorney couldn't be here, because this email, I'm looking at it right now, what's the attorney? Uh, the mayor, his assistant, and of course, I believe, uh, the clerk was probably talking directly about, there were some concerns.
And like I said, this is my first time coming, but I heard this was on the agenda, and I wanted to voice my opinion. But at the last thing, I'm a resident right now, I'm not a mayor pro temp. But ask, ask the applicants, were they having in their backyard and let their kids go to the restaurant where it's marijuana being sold?
I know there was a resident here the last meeting that did ask, you know.
Ask them that, ask them that, ask them if, right, it's only in the black neighborhoods that they do this. But ask them, do they have a one in their neighborhood where their kids can drive up to a drive-through restaurant? Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Again, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to agenda items. If there is anyone else who feels compelled, please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Sujud Hamadi, and I'm a cannabis attorney. I've actually done, um, some work for the City of Inkster. I volunteered a lot of my time and actually given a few, um, all right, I'm, I've given one in the past, and I'm giving a few more, uh, conferences where I provide information on marijuana and dispel a lot of, um, a lot of misunderstandings about marijuana. And I just want, I did want to put it on the record that all statistics point that having retailers, specifically adult-use retailers, and, um, and you're in a city actually reduces, uh, the amount of overdoses you have, and it exceptionally reduces the amount of, um, not just overdoses, but, uh, young people, um, engaging in the use of marijuana, because what it does is it starves out the black market. So it, um, it makes it so that there aren't, uh, people are no longer going to the black market or going to the caregiver that doesn't get a stuff check to buy their products. Instead, they're going to a place where it is, one, legal, two, whether the ID, you have to have proper identification in order to access the facility, and you have to be of age. And three, all, everything that is sold at a retailer has been, um, has had to have gone through a safety compliance facility first. And that way, you know that anyone who is getting their hands on marijuana isn't getting their hands on marijuana that's been laced with fentanyl, isn't getting their hands on marijuana that has high pesticides, um, or high amounts of pesticides within them, and isn't using marijuana that, um, has potentially been tampered with, or for example, that has mold overgrowth on it. So all statistics and all evidence shows that having these facilities in communities actually makes them exceptionally safer. And a lot of the other things that have been, that are being passed around, unfortunately, is a lot of just, um, you know, it's, it's a lot of, uh, rumors, and it's just a product of, um, you know, growing up and believing that some of these things are taboo, but it's actually doing a lot of great for many other communities, um, like Ann Arbor, like Ypsilanti, um, and, and those are just a few of many, or like Lansing, for example. Um, there, there is overwhelming evidence that shows that communities are safer and better for having adult-use retailers within their community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My one D O, on behalf of buds, uh, everything that's stated so far by everyone else in full respect is essentially outside the scope of your review. So specifically whether, uh, there are licenses left for medical marijuana provision centers is a different topic than whether you can grant an SLU for that location. Um, you can SLU any location that meets the requirements. In this case, I think, Mr. Garofalo, do these properties meet the requirements for special land use and site plan approval?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that is essentially the scope of your review. Whether someone has submitted an application before or after, or if there's licenses left or not, is, is, uh, it's an issue for another department. Outside the scope of your review, so, um, that's really the containment of what you should be considering. Now, of course, you want to think of other things, you definitely want to, to hear other, other approaches and other opinions, but your review needs to be contained within the four corners of, of the scope of your authority, which is whether or not these sites meet special land use and site plan review. And upon, if they do, you should send them to city council for their review. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's no further input from the public, we can move on to the next agenda item. Absolutely.
Or, um, issuance of things. Now, if, if such things are granted, so people can go ahead and continue to process their application, I mean, why would you even do it if they can't do anything until after the moratorium itself? I don't know what the process is, but it seems to me that in allowing them to do this, and then suddenly they're stopped, they can get just as angry at us for allowing it to go to this point and then not go any further when you knew they weren't supposed to be doing this at all. So I don't even understand why we even processing things at this point until the moratorium is lifted. That was my question, does anybody?
I'd be happy to chime in. Uh, so, so can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Um, so the moratorium is effectively, uh, a moratorium on the acceptance of new applications. So what that means is that we are not accepting any new applications for either medical marijuana re, uh, provisioning centers or adult-use recreational retailers. Um, but we are accepting applications for all other types of marijuana-related facilities, including micro businesses.
Yeah, well, the micro business was the reason for the moratorium, because no one's interested in taking on a partner at fifty-one percent in the city, uh, when you could have it all for yourself. So I understand that portion. The, the part I'm talking about is, um, I'm going to have to read that thing, because our intent was to stop everything until we had a chance to do whatever. So if this, you're talking about things that were already in the pipeline or being able to continue even through the moratorium?
That's correct.
And the language speaks to that?
Yes.
Hey, I'm not talking to you. And your rudeness is an example of becoming, that's what you're coming to my face. So, um,
So, so, so the mo, just, just for clarification, so the, the moratorium, as I understand it, currently is a moratorium on accepting any new applications. So we have a variety of different applications that are in various stages of the approval process. Uh, some are working on site plans, some are working on their special land use reviews. Some people are actually moving toward getting construction documents, uh, ready to go and start construction on new plans and things like that. But the moratorium specifically, uh, addresses new applications that are not going to be accepted until the moratorium is lifted.
Okay, and there's no possibility of, uh, there being some sort of, uh, problem with those current people if they don't?
So the way the process works is, uh, let me come up here.
Sure.
So I think we explained last time that we had a planning commission, what the general process is uh, for accepting any type of marijuana-related application. And so it starts at the clerk's office. The clerk accepts the application, does her background check, gets her information together. If they pass that initial step, then they are cleared to proceed to the site plan and special land use, uh, review process. That process is necessary for them to, uh, identify a site, show that they are meeting all other requirements for all of the site plan review and site plan requirements, and that they are coming before planning commission and asking for a special land use for whichever type of facility it is that they're, uh, proposing, whether it's a retail operation, a micro business, a grow, processing, any type of situation has to come before planning commission to get those approvals. Once they get those approvals, then they are allowed to move on to the next step, which is to fulfill construction for this, to actually build their facility out, ultimately with the goal of obtaining a certificate of occupancy for their facility. Once they receive the certificate of occupancy from the facility, then they go back to the clerk's office. And at that time, the clerk actually releases the official license, which allows them to operate and do business in the City of Inkster. However, at that time, if there is another facility that has already gotten to that point sooner than they have, and they are within, uh, separation or buffer distances between facilities that are required by the ordinances, they may be denied their license. So the way it is currently set up is it's kind of a race to the finish. So whoever gets there first is the one who gets their license. And at each step of the way, the applicant is advised that they are proceeding at their own risk. So any applications fees that they pay to the city are non-refundable, whether it's multiple application fees, which are five thousand dollars a piece, uh, for, uh, each of the different types of, uh, licenses. If you have a retail operation and you want to have medical marijuana as a provisioning center, and you want to have adult-use recreational retailer in the same facility, you have to buy two licenses. So that's ten thousand dollars that you have to put up front. That's just at the clerk's office. When you come to the planning office, you have to pay your site plan application fees. You have to pay your special land use fee, uh, for that application, for us to process that through. That's another five thousand dollars that's non-refundable. So at each, each step of what, uh, each step of the way, the applicant is, uh, not only incurring additional cost, the risk obviously is going up as well, because they're investing more money into the project. But the way the process according to the ordinance works is it's whoever gets to the certificate of occupancy, and then that is able to go to the clerk's office and obtain that last piece of the puzzle, that last final, uh, license to operate in the city.
Okay, well, just like the gentleman pointed out, that you all shouldn't be considering anything but the special land use, why should we be considering what they're putting into at this point? That's not our.
Well, because that's what the, the city ordinance requires them to do.
No, I know they require them to do that, but, uh, the way you're speaking, it's, uh, is if we are supposed to be concerned that they're not moving fast enough to get what they need.
Oh, we, we don't have any concern with.
That's what I'm saying.
How fast they're moving or not, that's entirely up to.
And it's there. Do we have any, uh, documentation anywhere that shows how much all of these six different public hearings have invested so far?
Um.
Is that something we can get?
In terms of the applicants investing?
Yes.
Uh.
What's the, what amount have they invested so far?
Well, if they have gotten to this, I can't speak to what they've invested, uh, personally in terms of spending for engineers and things like that to draw up their plans. But if for every license, it's five thousand dollars for each license or each type of facility, that's another that's at the clerk's office, five thousand a piece. And then at the planning department, uh, the site plan fee is typically seventeen-fifty, plus for a special land use consideration is another five thousand dollars. So right off the bat, if you're doing nothing more than just one type of facility, you've already got to invest almost twelve thousand dollars just to get to this point right here.
Okay. All right. Well, like I said, my concern with the moratorium being on that, um, should we even be considering, but you're saying that, and I really don't think our intent was that at the time.
I am, so, but that's okay. I understand what that, that might be, but the, the ordinance allows for and has a process set forth in the licensing procedure that forces them basically to go through all of these steps before that they get their license.
Right, okay. All right, just making sure, we're not having things come back on.
Uh, that, that is not our intention.
To the chair, can I ask Mr. Garofalo?
Mr. Garofalo, Commissioner Kane has some.
I have a question for you, please. You said that applicants are told about their risk at every step. How do we do that? It's documentation, and we have them sign off knowing at, at those extra steps that you could be denied, you could be denied. Do we have them sign off on it, or is it just a verbal?
So I can't speak to what the clerk's office does. I know that she has told me that she verbally communicates that to them. I don't know if they're given any documentation or by signing their application, they're understanding the risk. Um, but we make that a part of our, uh, review with the applicant when we're talking to them, um, that they understand that they're proceeding through this process and that they're, they still are at risk. Uh, even if they get their approval or, I'm sorry, recommendation for approval from planning to, for a special land use and their site plan, they still have to go to council. That's another opportunity where they can be turned down or turned away. Um, and that's another point of risk that they have to engage as well. Um, so I, currently, I don't know if the, uh, model has changed since I've sort of stopped being in the office and what the current protocols are in the planning office that Mara is, and her team is working with. But I know that, uh, we at least verbally are communicating that to them.
I, I'm just going to say, I think we should check on that and just make sure that we're doing something, you know, on a document.
I.
That stays away the liability.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I don't disagree.
They understand that there's risk every time they pay this extra five thousand dollars.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
No, I know, that was just really for the, uh, public. We weren't even down to the actual item itself, so.
Yep.
Commissioners, I guess we could hold off for a minute.
Yeah.
Um, we're just allowing the public to speak to the agenda items.
Okay.
Um, and that was just one matter. I know there's two different things on the agenda, and I'm sorry if we didn't state those. Um, I will state them at this time, just in case anybody is wondering. Item A, under Old Business, is a presentation on special land uses in the City of Inkster. Then item B is case numbers twenty-one dash twenty, special land use, and twenty-one dash nineteen, site plan review. And that's for adult-use marijuana retailer, medical marijuana provision center, and drive-through restaurant. Item C are case numbers twenty-one dash nineteen, special land use, and twenty-one dash nineteen, site plan review for adult-use marijuana retailer. Uh, again, we, this was for the general public, so if there's anybody additional, before we move on to the next item, which would be basically old business, please come forward this time to speak if you feel compelled.
Like me, again, my name was Sujud Hamadi. Um, as I was sitting down, I heard a lot of language about they and them and returning to, um, our cities or our respective cities to start our businesses there, but I did want to clarify that that's actually completely unconstitutional. And if any of that language is reiterated by a public official, um, because of public officials are considered agents of the public body, that that language, um, is, uh, is problematic for more reasons than one. One, it's unconstitutional at the state level, but it's also unconstitutional at the federal level. It violates the Commerce Clause that says that you're not allowed to favor in, um, in-state or in-city residents over, out of, um, municipality or out of state residence. Um, and then the other comment I'd like to make, as I overheard, somebody state, um, or someone asked about uh, obtaining the personal finances of the applicants, that is not actually foible. Uh, no one is allowed to make a FOIA request for personal documentation like that or anything that involves the personal affairs of a business that way. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, when I stated my name, I said I'm a resident tonight. Now, you come before council, and those rules does apply, but as a resident, I can say what I want to say, because I'm a resident. So when you talk that law language, I'm a resident tonight. I'm not a council person, and I did say that when I got on air, so. No, you was, because I'm the only one that said something. So I am a resident tonight. And I'm tired of this, as a resident, and my constituents are seeing that. Thank you.
Thank you. And. Yep, I was going to say, uh, hearing nothing else from the general public, I would like to move us right on down to item five, public hearings. We don't have any public hearings tonight. We're going down to item six, old business. First item under old business is item A, presentation on special land uses in the City of Inkster. I believe that's the part where Mara will be on with us virtually, or how's the presentation going?
So I think you need to check with Tony to see whether or not he was able to work out the logistic trial, sorry.
Here you go.
Hi, um, can you hear me? Hello?
Off the, that's.
Can you guys hear me?
Not good yet, Mara.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I've got the speakers. Awesome. But unmuted, but it's still come over her head.
Should we be able to hear now?
Can you hear me? Uh, I'm not sure. Can you guys hear me?
It would be better. This will be able to hear better, right?
One second, Mara.
Okay. Sorry, say that again.
We're trying to test out the audio. If you can, just say a few words.
Okay, so I just.
Can you mute it down there?
Hello?
Okay, we can we can hear you. Start with your presentation.
Okay, um, well, I just want to say first of all, thank you, Troy, for. Creating this Zoom meeting and I'm I'm sorry, I'm not there to join in person, but I am not feeling well. And um keeping a distance. But I did perform some research with my colleagues in the planning department. To discuss the business license intake for marijuana related businesses. And we created the the memorandum in front of you today. Um, but before we go into discussing the memorandum, I do want to bring up. That marijuana related businesses are allowed in the zoning ordinance. Um, as of right now. There may there I fear I've heard discussion today that they might not be. Uh, desirable uses, but right now as as we stand. Marijuana related businesses are allowed in the zoning ordinance and we can see that by the following. Um, schedule of uses and we see in the zoning ordinance that a provisioning center and. Recreational retailer are special land uses. So they're not banned. Marijuana is not banned in the zoning ordinance. My previous community that I worked within banned marijuana. Um, but right now marijuana businesses are allowed. As special land uses. So today, Planning Commission is here to discuss. The process for approving or denying a special land use. For the um as it relates to the zoning ordinance and. These applicants today are performing their due process because marijuana businesses are allowed as a special land use. And it's up to the Planning Commission today to decide if they want to move forward with their span special land use requests. Or deny, but the ultimate discretion is for city council to decide. Um, all special land use requests require a site plan. So that's why you also have site plans for discretion today. And site plans require approval or denial of the Planning Commission. Um, so I'll go into the introduction. Again, this document provides a background. On the existing moratorium. Of all marijuana related businesses in Inkster. We also have definitions of all marijuana related businesses and. A schedule of uses that I just showed you at the beginning of this presentation. A little bit of the background in the moratorium. We found for minutes, um, we'll see the footnote, uh, council minutes from January third, twenty twenty two. That there's a lapse in a moratorium from December twenty one, twenty twenty. Through also the moratorium was from December. Twenty one, twenty twenty to December twenty one, twenty twenty one. And then there was another extension from. On January third, twenty twenty two, but you can see from December twenty first, twenty twenty one to January third, twenty twenty two. There is a a twelve day lapse. And that's when businesses applied for a special land use or for a marijuana business. License with the city clerk. So first of all, before we go into everyone's duties. In the standards that the city clerk uses and that the planning department uses and that planning commission uses, we'll talk about amendments. So um there've been several ordinance passed related to marijuana businesses. Um, within the city of Inkster but are not yet online in American legal. American legal, as you know it. Contains all of the ordinances related to the city. And there are several uncodified ordinances in um in the city. They're not yet published within American legal and they're not yet published in American legal because each time. The city requests to publish an ordinance. It costs the city money, so the logic was to wait a little bit. Um, before while planning department looks to revise ordinance further. And then send that marijuana revised ordinance to American legal. However, these ordinances need a place to live so that we are transparent to the public. And they live at the latest ordinance's webpage. On the city webpage. So these are ordinances that have been recently passed but are not yet codified within American legal. And we can see. There's, well, there's three of them. One needs to still go up here. But there's one that involves marijuana retail businesses and standards of how we. Allow marijuana retail businesses, medical and retail in the city. And then there's also chapter one twenty four revisions that regulate the process for allowing marijuana business license. And I just want to address a comment related earlier, but I'm gonna let the city attorney um. Follow up on this. The chapter one twenty four revisions, um, this revision includes removing a cap on. Provisioning centers. Previously, there was a cap of three provisioning centers in the language in American legal. This ordinance that was passed by council and planning commission. Um, removes the cap and that's section one two four dot oh five. So I think what this logic was from a conversation with the city attorney was to rely on buffers. And we know that buffers um are part of our special land use. Standards of approval as I'll get into in the planning department's reveal. So, um, the we can see the three ordinances that should be listed. Chapter one twenty four is amended in September twenty twenty and the other ordinance that I showed you is amended in twenty twenty one. We also have another ordinance that allowed marijuana recreational. Marijuana or businesses as a special land use in December twenty nineteen. So the existing process, I know we talk a lot about that there's holes and challenges in the existing process. Yes, there are and it's our job to revise them, but right now we just want to lay out what the ground rules and clarify what the existing process is. So the first step is going to the clerk's office. So the applicant. Submits the marijuana license application and the clerk reviews the application per nine standards. One standard includes a background check, working with the police department and planning department. The standards are listed further in this memo on page six. I can go over them shortly. Step two, after the clerk sends a pass letter or authorization letter clearing them, the planning department reviews. The application and the applicant submits a site plan and a special land use application. The staff then performs a site plan based on the standards of zoning ordinance. And then the staff performs a special land use review. Um, all standards related to the special land use review are outlined in pages seven to ten of the memo. But they're also in this table here. So you can see that one, two, three, four, five. Five sections of the zoning ordinance. Authorized pain department to review the request of the applicant. And make sure that the applicant's project addresses these regulations within the zoning ordinance. And each review letter addresses all of these standards in the zoning ordinance and waves. Uh, if the applicant meets these requirements and zoning ordinance or not. So then we make a recommendation of planning commission. Planning commission then reviews the site plan and special land use application submission. They hold the public hearing as we saw two weeks ago. And the commission makes a recommendation to city council on special land uses. Again, the decision is based on special land use standards of the zoning ordinance in this table. And we do want to point out that the special land use standards are somewhat subjective. Based on the character of set forth in section one, five, two, eight, nine. So the planning commission is authorized to make decision based on. The how the applicant meets. The standards in the zoning ordinance and these standards are based on, as we can see later on, of how. The project relates to the general. Character of the neighborhood, how it relates to goals in the master plan, how it relates to public services and. That's why I say that they're somewhat subjective. Um, we can look into them one on one, but I'll just keep going and giving the cursory overview. A special land use cannot be approved by council without an approved site plan. So that brings up the topic of site plans. In a site plan. Um, is is not subjective. Site plan is objective and it needs to meet the standards of the zoning ordinance. As obligated and the council commission is obligated to approve the site plan if it meets those objectives. Moving on, the city council then reviews the special land use submission. And then council makes a decision to approve or deny the special land use. Based on the zoning ordinance. Again, council and planning commission have to use the zoning ordinance as a guide. There is somewhat subjectivity, but they have to use the standards in the zoning ordinance for their reasoning to deny or approve a special land use. After that, the applicant, if they're successful, approaches the building department and they seek building permits. Then the staff schedules inspections, staff issues a C O. After that, the clerk's office is involved again. The clerk corresponds with the state. If the state grants approval, then the clerks. Can move on and review the applicant staff and city council commission materials. If the clerk finds that all of these are satisfactory and they review the items ten through fourteen, so four standards. Of their rules of regulation, then the applicant applicant is approved. And for these four standards involve making sure the site plan is addressed, special land uses is addressed, permits. Or pulled and C O is approved. Um, as I said before, we need to improve our process. What I just explained is the existing process, but we. As a group, need to improve the proposed process and improvements. Uh, need to be made, including one in particular where we look at the buffer. Within um at the beginning, preliminarily, at the beginning of the application process within the clerk's office. So this is one change where we look at the thousand foot buffer required. Um, with the city clerk at the beginning of the process. I want to put a pin in this in a minute because I as I related, as I referred to earlier. City staff already, the planning department staff already reviews the buffer within their special land use. Standards of review. So this offer is already being approached. Yet it needs to be approached at the beginning of the process as opposed to step two of the process. Um, and we recognize that. Then. Uh, others, other areas of improvement are to revise the city's ordinances to better reflect. Applications and desires of the city and then also amend the master plan so that's reflecting the community's voice and desires for future policy decisions. As I've said earlier on, this memo contains definitions of all types of marijuana related businesses, medical and recreational. You can see them listed here. And here is the beginning of the standards for the city clerk's office, standards one through fourteen. One through eight are included or one through ten are included in um. The phase or step one of the business licensing process and then. The same one through ten. And then ten through fourteen are at step six of the business licensing process. Here's listed the special land use standards for the planning department to look into. So first, there's general special land use standards that apply for all. All special land use requests in the city. These are the same standards that staff use for any type of special land use request. Marijuana or non-marijuana related. And these are where we say that they can be somewhat subjective because it's asking. Will the use be harmonious with the goals, policies and actions of the master plan? And I point this out because one key finding is that the two thousand seventeen master plan is outdated and planning commission is aware of this. We um Michigan State law recommends that planning master plans are updated every five years. And two thousand seventeen add five years, that's twenty twenty two. So we can see that we definitely need to consider involving the public. Um, feedback more in what they want to see as it relates to marijuana or just general future policy decisions. Um, but that's one one item and then I can keep, I can go into. All of the standards here, but they're also within the packets because each report reviews each standard for special land use. Um, will it further enhance the health, safety, welfare, morals, character, convenience? Will it erode or reduce the economic viability of the area? All of these are, I mean, will it be adequately served by its public services and facilities? Um, I can see that there can be somewhat um subjectivity, but then again. We try to maintain an objective point of view, weighing both considerations. And pros and cons for the planning department and that's what for the planning commission and that's what the goal of our our report is. Um, moving on additional use standards, so since marijuana is a delicate use. The planning or city of Inkster's adopted additional regulations to consider marijuana uses. Um, and these are included in additional use standard reviews. So again, after the special land use review, we have additional use standards. That we review on behalf of the zoning ordinance and these include the barriers. Um, making sure that they comply by the state licensing. These are standards for all, by the way, all medical and marijuana facilities, so they have to comply by the state. Um. No smoking is prohibited. They have to have security cameras. Um. It's just additional standards. And then here we see the recreational marijuana retailer standards. They cannot be within a thousand feet of a school. Or a drug free zone and then additional um standards are. Another retailer cannot be within a thousand feet. Measuring distance of a lawfully existing medical marijuana provisioning center or recreational establishment. So this means lawfully existing, so it's already. So this means lawfully existing, so it's already existing. And that's where we talk about where our city planner, um, Goran Flo mentioned. Um, the race to the finish. This is one possible amendment that we could consider looking into, but that's at a later date. Because right now what's authorized by commission is to perform the due process of applicants. At us in front of us because the zoning ordinance does authorize this use. Um, number one, but it's especially in use, so we have to use these standards. Uh. Moving on, here's the buffer, or this is the additional requirements for medical provisioning centers. We can see the radius here and after that we have the use table. So it's difficult for me to correspond. Again, thank you for accommodating this virtual meeting. Um, I wish it could be there. I. Um, but I, I can't answer any questions. I'm gonna let the city attorney and perhaps Plater Goran Flo to address them first. Because I can't interact with you in the room. Um, but I am here and I can, if you ask your questions all at once, I could write down, um. The answers to, and as a way to facilitate the conversation, but, um, thank you.
Alright, you walking on mute now? Um, so that was the presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments or concerns about item A presentation?
Alright.
I would comment.
Alright.
Um, well, I appreciate the planning staff, um, providing that information. Um. We did have a ton of questions at the last meeting. And there was a lot of confusion about process, about what's allowed. Um, about what it means to process applications, um, implications for. So many things. We asked a lot of questions and submitted our concerns and writing and I feel like the. Um, memo that was provided did actually address, um. Most of my questions. Um, so I really appreciate that went into that memo. Alright, I, I would recommend that that be forwarded to city council as well.
Alright, well, if nothing else, Mr. Moore, was there something you wanted to address on the presentation?
Okay, great, thank you.
I don't see too well, so I had to log in as long as you see the presentation. So looking at on the screen. You're down to item B. This case. Case numbers twenty-one dash twenty, special land use and twenty-one dash twenty-nine, site plan review. Adult use marijuana retailer, medical marijuana provision center and drive-through restaurant. Review and consider recommendation of approval of a special land use request to city council and approval of a site plan for a retail marijuana establishment. Medical marijuana provision center and drive-through restaurant in the B three general business district. At two nine two two five dash two nine two four five, Michigan Avenue. Mr. Said, is that? Mr. Gore Flo, wanna refresh our memory or anybody in the general public or viewing, or virtual viewing audience, feel free to approach.
So I'll see if I can do as good a job as Mara engaged did last week or two weeks ago. Um, three weeks.
Two weeks.
Yep, how time flies when you're having fun. Uh, okay, so. My understanding, if I recall correctly, was, uh. We had gone through the special land use, uh, review and the site plan review for this particular application. There were some questions here and there, uh, but most of the, uh, concern was over not having enough time. To look at the application, uh, because some of you didn't actually receive the packet in time, uh, to do that. So I'm, hopefully that was all worked out and that you have had a chance to look at the information. Are there any, before I jump into this, did you have any questions as a result of your subsequent review that I could answer for you?
Not at this moment, I don't. Okay.
Sure.
I do want, yeah, I do want you to.
Sure, so. Um, as Mara pointed out, there's two aspects of, uh, an approval to move these projects forward. Uh, one is a special land use consideration and one is a site plan review consideration. Both of those are recommendations that go to the city council for final action. Uh, once city council takes action, uh, on those two items, that allows the applicant then to, uh. If they're approved by city council to move forward to the next step, which is final site plan or construction drawings, detailed engineering plans. And so their drawings and any conditions that we might suggest or impose at this stage of the game. Then come back to the planning department and are reviewed by both the city engineer and the city planning staff. And the review is done administratively. Once. Both of our departments are satisfied that they've met the final site plan requirements. Uh, and any conditions that were imposed, that's when they get to move on to the building department to apply for permits and such. So as far as the special land use considerations for this particular property, if you'll recall, it's at the southwest or southeast corner. Of. Middle Belt and Michigan.
Right.
Uh, and we had, uh, six items under the special land use. Uh, I'm not gonna go through, it's a ten-page report and as Mara pointed out. We do go through and identify and comment on each of the required standards. Uh, that's required by ordinance, uh, and provide you some commentary on that. But it boils down to basically six, uh, fairly inconsequential things. Uh, one, it would be conditioned on the approval of the site plan. Two, uh, no smoking signs would be placed conspicuously through, uh, across and throughout the property. Um, three, that the property owner and business owner submit documentation that the site is open to inspection by any applicable agency. Um, four, uh, we need a measurement from the driveways to the property line and the intersection to be included on the site plan. Um, five, uh, they should post signs indicating that consumption of food and beverages from outside. Uh, or off-premise sources as, uh, uh, not allowed. Uh, and six, uh, if there's any other conditions that would arrive through their approval process by any of the outside agencies such as the drain commissioner. Uh, the, uh, city engineer or somebody like that that would have additional comments. Um, so that's our, uh, so we are recommending, um. Special land use approval or recommendation for special land use approval with those six conditions. As far as the site plan review for that particular site. Um, we did review that as well. Uh, and there were six conditions also that should be, uh, considered as part of. Any motion making a recommendation to city council to move this project forward. Uh, the first one is that the color of the exterior wall should be neutral. Uh, the applicant should indicate what colors, uh, will be chosen and, and note that on the plans. Uh. Given the fact that there's extent, extensive irrigate or landscaping and irrigation should, system should be installed. Uh, and, um, that can be included as a detail in the final, uh, construction, final site plans and construction plans. Uh, the photometric plan. Does not indicate the foot handles at the property line and must be revised to indicate so that we can make a determination that it meets the requirements of the ordinance. Um, the site plan must indicate the anticipated number of employees during the largest work shift for the drive-through restaurant. In order to, uh, formalize the calculations for the parking requirements. Uh, the planning commission, uh, is allowed to and should consider granting a waiver. For a reduction in the size of the loading space, uh, to ten by thirty-five feet instead of the required ten by seventy feet. Um, simply because the type of vehicles that are gonna be visiting the site to make any sort of deliveries are. Gonna be substantially smaller than a semi, um, trying to maneuver in and through that site. Um, so we did review the location of their proposed, uh, modified loading zone and it does, uh. It satisfies the planning department and we are recommending that the planning commission grant a waiver for that reduction in size. So having said all of that, uh, we are recommending approval with the conditions. Six for the special land use review and, and six conditions for the, uh, site plan review. And if you'll notice, there is some proposed language if, uh, any commissioners were. Uh, inclined to make a recommendation or put forth a motion, um, there's something there for you to get you started. But I'm happy to answer any questions at this time if you have a for me.
Yes, I have a quick question and it's just in regards, I know we do this a lot with different, um, businesses or different applicants where we grant a waiver. Because of the box truck situation.
Correct.
Most times I see it on our agenda and let me just make sure I overlook it, I didn't, um, it's down there as a. Additional item to vote on. The way that this is all stated and things like that is fine, the way it's incorporated, we don't have to vote on a waiver separately.
No.
Great, okay.
No.
Alright, thank you, I'm awesome.
Richard Davis. The restaurant, the drive-to restaurant is a separate building from the.
It's, it's not a separate building, it's a, um, it's separated with firewall.
Firewall.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a single building, but it's two separate spaces. They're not tied together, there's no doors, there's no connections between the two. Uh, but it is a requirement of the fire marshal that, uh, there be a firewall.
Between the two.
In between the two.
Right.
So all of the systems and everything for each business are gonna be separate, so it's gonna have separate power, separate electrical, separate. Everything coming in to feed, uh, that particular.
And I'm assuming security gonna be the whole area.
Correct, yep.
I do have one additional question.
Yes, sir.
We, we haven't. So in the past, when we talked about the meta, I'm sorry, the marijuana business license, we were talking about pairing. Medical with adult use so that we would just have two in one location. And of course those would have been additional special land uses. For this particular vote, and I know you said the language is there already because you're really talking about, and this is from my perception, so just correct me if I'm looking at it wrong.
Mm-hmm.
But for adult use, I thought that was one S L U and then medical would be another. For two separate licenses, am I, i- am I correcting that?
Technically, yes, you are correct.
Okay, so with the vote, is this three votes or, or like? Three special land uses, two special land uses, I just, when we get ready to call the question, I just want to make sure we do it appropriately.
No, I want to make sure you do it right too.
That's the clarifying question.
Absolutely.
Last, are you asking about the city licensing or state licensing?
Nope.
No, city, the city licensing has both provisions also. So the city, um, licensing, uh. Regulations mirror those from the state.
Okay.
So the state has separate license requirements for medical use, uses. Uh, and then it has separate regulations for recreational use, uh. Applications. In this particular case, they are wanting to do a medical marijuana provisioning center. And an adult use recreational retailer. And they're both retail operations, but one sells adult use recreation and one sells medical use marijuana. And so in this particular case, yes, there would be, um, you, you, you. I don't think technically it makes a lot of difference whether you separate medical versus adult use. Uh, in your motion for the special land use, you could combine them together and say, this is a special agent's approval for, uh. Blah, 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 and a blah, 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 and then do the site plan resolution after that.
Okay, thank you.
Does that, does that answer your question though about the, how the licensing affects? How we vote?
Yeah, well, the reason I was asking because those persons or I'm sorry, business owners who already were in possession of medical. When they would have applied for recreational, they would have had to come back before us for special annuals.
Correct.
That's why I was asking because they would have been before us twice where any applicant who has something on our agenda in this capacity is only before us once. So that's why I wanted to know if this, we needed to do a special land use vote for adult use.
Right, right, right.
And then on top of the site plans, because the site plans is one consult again.
Right.
So. But yes, that does clear it up now.
Yes, but it took to expound on your point.
Welcome.
If, if you, if you were to, uh, have one existing license and facility that was operational. And you wanted to do something in addition to that, you would have to come through this whole process all over again for. A special land use review for whatever type of marijuana facility you were contemplating.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, anybody additional?
I just want clarification for that. With regard to which, I have another question too, but you just brought up something which I did not know. So you're saying that. So why are we approving one motion for two different things if we normally do it separately? It is normally done that way. So why are we making an exception to do this application together for two separate licenses? Number one, I gotta keep my thought because it's a lot going on, mate, I'm sure you can do better than me. And then the other one was, um. The, uh, the, the licenses, the licenses, the licenses themselves.
Mm-hmm.
So the first one is from the city, right? I'm sorry, yet we, we give them permission to say, hey, it's okay, you got anything you need to do, you can move forward.
Yeah.
They still had to go to state or did the other way around.
Way around.
So but before they come to us, they've already went to the state.
That's correct.
They already know that they, they are able to do this and you guys already know that they're able to do this. Now they're coming to the city and saying, hey, we've done what we're supposed to do.
That's right.
Got the state license, we know.
Well, they, 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 there again, the, this, the state licensing procedure is very similar to the cities and. In that you get a preliminary approval to move forward. And then the state requires that you get all your local approvals and then come back to the state.
Okay.
To get your absolute final, final piece of paper that says you're up and running and doing the right thing. So they actually have to get their state license or their local license. From the city before they can go back to the state to get their final state.
So state, city.
State, correct.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
And you guys, uh, are making sure that they do everything they do and then we are making sure that you did what you're supposed to do.
That's right. So the planning department is responsible for a certain piece of this puzzle.
Mm-hmm.
The clerk's office is responsible for a certain piece of the puzzle. As, as far as it pertains to approvals through the city. And then the building department obviously is responsible for another piece of the puzzle. When they're going through and getting their permits to construct and things like that. So I'm gonna back up and answer your first question, which is if it. If it would make you all feel more comfortable to break them apart, uh, in this particular case, I have no issue breaking them apart. Um, just so that it's consistent. Um, and that way there's no question in the future as to.
Why we allow one.
Why, yeah, why we allowed one and I mean, for some reason, I, I mean, I can't think of one because we're not recommending that. You approve one and deny another, but if there was some outstanding reason why you all thought we should have. You know, an adult retailer, but not another provisioning center, you certainly could vote that way. Um, and that would be the advantage to breaking them apart like that is if there was some sort of concern. I didn't think there was any particular concern during that way, but, um, certainly you are entitled to, to break those apart. And I think it might keep things cleaner.
Correct. Man, um, I'm sorry, but I'm hearing this conversation over here and this is really distracting my thoughts, so, um.
We'll come back to you.
Yeah.
Did you have a question?
You said the medical and recreational can operate out of one building.
That's correct.
You don't have to have two site plans for medical and recreational to operate out of one building.
That's correct.
Right.
Yep. And. And I and I I'm not going to count. Well, I'll complicate things a little bit. And and just say that um the the way the micro business ordinance was were written. Was they were written in such a way to try actually to encourage multiple micro businesses under different owners. To operate within the same facility as well. So. The um, the whole idea of combining facilities and offering multiple types of services is sort of uh. Pervasive throughout all of the ordinances as they're currently written. Um, but yes, if 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 you want to do provisioning center and adult retailer, you can do both. You can do both out of the same building, but you have to apply for two licenses.
Yeah, right, right.
And then to, you know, special land use review fees and to site plan application fees and so on and so forth. So that it can get pretty expensive by the time you get done through this whole process.
Again, for clarification, because a lot of this we did kind of go over a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And we did get a lot of it. We talked about this before, but again, my thing was I hadn't got this up before and I just wanted to make sure. That I was voting on something or not voting on something. And that's why I asked for the time.
Yep.
This special meeting tonight.
Absolutely.
So. When we talk about the buffers.
Mm hmm.
These, the applicant could add, and we also talked about other applicants who had already applied before. Another applicant, not just in any instance, it's not just to be anyone.
Correct.
Since we're talking about this tonight. If an applicant has already gone before this particular accident, we're just going to. Do an example because I really don't know where I've topped my head. I'm just saying. Um, and they actually do everything they're supposed to do. They can actually. Jump to finish line and beat that other applicant even though they applied before and they can get. Knocked out because they're in the buffering and and they they they've met it. And so now that other applicant. They've spent all the money they needed to do it. Nowadays, like you said, they've taken that risk and they've lost that money or what they've already put forth because another applicant. Came forth and did everything they supposed to do, but they did it faster.
Correct, correct. And that's one of the things that we're very cognizant of here at the city in terms of processing applications in a timely fashion so that. There's not um. So that there's less of a risk of an applicant coming back later and pointing the finger at the city and saying. I didn't get my license because you guys took too long to review my plans or to get us on an agenda. Could it happen? Um, I suppose it could, it could, yes.
And the drive through restaurant. So this is drive through only.
Correct.
There's no seating.
Um, there's no seating, but is there a way to come into the building?
Yeah.
To take out.
Even though it's a drive through only, there is seating.
Yeah, so there's no seating inside.
And we'll get to the rest of the part with the times and stuff. Our left part comes later. We don't, that's nothing to be discussed now. Because right now tonight is only about the special land use for what he.
Well, in this particular case, because they are applying for a restaurant as well, a drive through restaurant. Um, now would be the perfect time to talk about hours limitations, any sort of special concerns that you have with regard to the operation of the restaurant as well. Yeah, because now you 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 only get one sort of bite at the apple.
That's why I wanted to know. So do we, we ask the applicant, because the applicant will come up again or?
Yes, that's my, that's my hope is that we're gonna.
I get to talk some more.
Yep, yep. You can ask some more questions because I certainly don't know the answers to the ones.
I just want to be clear. Just a little clarification.
And that's why, that well, that's why we postponed. And that's why we've got the time to to go through this more thoroughly. So um, does anybody else have any questions for me at the moment? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, hold on, we. Yes, you can approach. I'm sorry. I just realized where we were on the agenda. Please. Question.
Um, so the times of the restaurant. So we already clarified it's drive through only, but you are going to have seating.
I don't believe we're actually in the restaurant.
Yeah, so that's why I was like, why are we having sitting if we track them on? See, he said yes.
So I said, I think we got to. Uh, you drive through and then you can call and carry out if I'm walking over there, if I'm pulling out the parking. You can go and you can carry out and go without having to walk through the drive through. But we don't plan to be able to see.
Okay, and the hours of operation?
Whatever figured I'm out. I'm on my big queen early morning and late evening. No twenty four hours.
No, but if we can be open those later, I mean, look, it's that's really a function of. Uh, business once operational, right? I mean, we maybe we'll start out, let's say we'll start out ten AM. To midnight or ten AM to ten PM, right? Um, and then if we find there's more business, let's say people are waiting at ten AM at the shop. To get through with them, we'll open up, we'll ask to open an hour earlier for sure. Um. The same thing if people are, let's say, coming at ten PM at night and they're coming at the last minute, getting, you know, getting. Uh, items from the business and we definitely asked to open longer and maybe on Fridays or Saturdays. With other things going on in the area, we might, you know, need to stay open longer. I don't think we'd stay open, you know, longer. Two AM is unlikely. I don't think there's any.
What type of food do you all plan on serving?
Juice restaurant.
We're looking at juice restaurant and we're looking at Mexican food. Talking with a couple of different parts. Which one do you like better?
Alright, whichever one tastes good. Might have to stay open later.
It it just seems to me that you would have some that if you have in a restaurant, I just think that in my mind that you would already have. That kind of like what you plan.
I'll brag.
Said that they say you're going to have a restaurant because I feel like they just throw in the rest.
Notion is this that without approval, uh, without approval, it's very hard for us to actually negotiate terms for a tenant at this location. Right? That's really the issue is without any approval, what are we going to show them? Right? We have a plan to do something, but you know, um. They're gonna laugh, they're gonna laugh us out of their office and say, okay, come back when you have an approval to do this this restaurant and then we can negotiate a deal on whether we'll come.
So you could actually not have the restaurant if you decided you didn't want to?
No, we would build the restaurant, no, the especially review approval was for the restaurant and the. We built the restaurant as well. The site plan approval is your improvement site plan built as well.
Commissioner Williams.
So that that I guess so that is my question. So the the this could be the restaurant portion of it could be a sublease, so it may not actually be operated by.
Exactly. We're not, you know, my client are not, they're not restaurant employees, right? So the the reason we're building it out is to bring a restaurant there, to bring something over there, you know. It's very hard for us to negotiate those, you know, those terms, anybody without having some sort of approval.
Okay, so the contingent upon the approval will then you be able to. Determine if it's going to be in-house restaurant or if you're going to do a third party.
And we would, we would have, I mean, we would come in with the, you know, the, we'd have the chain coloring floor plans and whatnot, many floor plans for what the tenant wants. So our engineer drawing, we definitely show that um, we got approval here. Well, after city council, not here.
But you have, but but currently there is a a a preliminary outline of what the restaurant portion is going to be. And the separate interests, et cetera, et cetera. Of the initial.
Separate businesses.
Okay, and that's and that's already part of the site, site plan, correct?
Yes. Our, already, uh, let's do this commissioners, uh, let's go ahead, I guess, so we can. Move into a discussion portion of it.
Okay.
And that way, if there's anything further, if we need any additional person from the administration to speak to. That is since that we were just not talking about it before we even get the call for it all. Um, what I asked Mr. Bornflow was about separating the special land uses just because of how things have been done in past practices. Is it a consensus of his body as that or whoever makes the motion? If that's what you want to do, feel free. So. Um, item B. The floor is open for a motion on case numbers. Twenty one special land use and twenty one nineteen site plan review, adult use marijuana retailer, medical marijuana provisioning center and drive through restaurant. Again, the floor is open for a motion.
Okay, we got. The twenty to the C three, three hundred seven Michigan Avenue. Is that a different building?
Yes.
Mm hmm, this is a different case.
Thirty thousand seven Michigan Avenue, that's an entirely different.
So we're just doing B right now.
Oh, item B.
Right, okay, that's.
And that's the one I was asking about if it was three different ones, if there was two special land uses and then one site plan.
Right.
City attorney, I would like to hear his take on some of the things that we were talking about.
Want to hear his take before. Oh, making any motions and not during discussion?
Are we at discussion yet?
Well, that's what I was saying. If we call for a motion or something, we could go into discussion and have him speak before we actually. Vote on it. So so it's up to you.
That's fine.
No motion was made, so there's no motion on the floor.
That's fine, either way, it's fine.
Okay. So your turn, Mr. Jones. Um, I believe Commissioner Kane wanted some input, maybe a question that you have to expand upon?
Yeah, I just wanted to get some input from the attorney's view on. I know we sent some questions and some things, some of the questions that we had are just about this marijuana medical. The operations and how we're doing that and. The buffers and how that works and the process. We just kind of want to, I would like to hear from you and just your thoughts on it. And I know we're having issues on whether or not we, if we feel like we want to deny an application. What does that do to the city? If we approve it with this process that we have in place now where it's a race to the finish, does that put us into some type of liability? So I would just want to hear some, you know, your stand as the attorney as far as liability wise for us as a planning commission. Uh, depending upon how we make a decision here.
Yeah, unfortunately, you gave me a fire hose of questions.
I did, I did.
The answer is yes, yes, and possibly, you know, but. Um, what I would suggest you do, I think the chair was asking for a motion. Um, I don't want to just. Spew out an opinion just off the. Out of a stream of consciousness. Um, I think one of your concerns is the denial at this stage at the planning commission, whether it opens up city to liability. Answer is yes, but I think the direction we've got from the planning commission is the best way to go. About minimizing the city's liability, as any attorney will tell you, people can always sue for anything. There's. The mechanisms which it was set up here in the city of Inkster did lend itself to a race to the finish, but it's kind of unavoidable. At this point, um, there's a recommendation that I know. That has been discussed with planning commission and administration to do some amendments to prevent that in the future, but unfortunately. Because of the moratorium, because of the amendment to the ordinances, we are where we are now. There are some applications pending and I'm I'm not going to speak to the number of them. And where they are in the process, but. It's just where it's at. And so I think the best thing to do other than to meet. To give out opinion that may give a person an advantage from a legal strategy perspective is just to allow you to. The motion is passed, you have a discussion and there's a specific issue, I'd rather address it that way. Than just to give legal advice unsolicited to a potential plaintiff.
Got it.
Well. Through that one.
Um, so the, there was a question about whether or not, um. Alright, there was a question about whether or not there should be, um, we should approve. Or recommend approval or of the whether the recommendation itself should be seen as multiple pieces. Being that there is um. Marijuana retailer, medical marijuana provisioning and drive through as opposed to um doing two appro- two recommendations. Do you have any insights about on the advantages of having uh three as opposed to two?
As opposed to separating the two different motions or two different items?
Yes. And and maybe a better way to say it is to separate.
Special land.
Those. The right, the um marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provisioning center. I think, am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can clarify it. Um, there was discussion earlier before you got here. Um, since the applicant is applying for effectively two special land uses. One as a medical marijuana provisioning center and the other is an adult use recreational retailer. Should we have two motions, one for each special land use? Uh, I s- I said I wasn't sure, but I didn't think it would make a difference, but. As we discussed it, it seems to be more logical that we do separate them into the two uses. You don't need a special end use motion or recommendation for the drive through restaurant. That's part of the site plan. Part of things. So the only thing that we're asking is should we have two special land use motions? Uh, for approval or recommendation for approval to send to council as opposed to just one combined resolution?
My legal opinions, I would prefer they're separate.
Yeah, okay.
Just because if we have an issue on one, they're not all in one motion.
Right.
Thank you. Alrighty, well, um. Did you want to address something further? Oh, oh, okay. And I was just doing that because you're with the applicant. Alrighty, um, commissioners, the. So you heard the opinion on that matter and we have talked about that. So whomever makes the motions. Please do a motion special land use for adult use marijuana retailer. Whether we approve or deny recommendation, a special land use. Or medical marijuana provision to center, whether we approve or deny recommendation. And then there will be the call for the site plan review. For it all together. Alright. Alright, so the floor is open for a motion.
Can I make a motion to approve special land use for medical for marijuana retailer?
So that's adult use marijuana retailer?
Yes, adult use marijuana retailer.
Okay, so that's the first motion.
Right.
All right, is there support?
We can write that, I think we're making a. A recommendation.
Yes, we make a recommendation to city council.
And I'm making a bunch of, I said approve it.
Okay, so say it again for me.
Alright, I said that was to take approve out, because I just say make a motion to approve special land use for marijuana retailer.
Recommendation is objective.
A motion to recommend approval to city council.
Yes, medical marijuana retailer.
And that's the special land use.
Special land use with uh. Has six conditions in the special land use. Based off of how the project addresses the standard listed in the zoning ordinance.
Is there support?
Support.
They're properly moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Here or not, all in favor?
Alright.
All opposed? Motion passes. Floor is open for a second motion.
I like to make a motion that we consider recommendation of approval. Of a special land use for medical marijuana. Provisioning center and drive through restaurant to city council.
One second. Oh, amend that motion because I'm sorry. Is there support before? Let me do that way. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, so that needs to be amended.
Yes.
The drive through restaurant is not to be.
Alright, because we did say we was taking that out, so you want me to. You said it over?
Yeah, you, yes, yes.
Okay. I like, I like to move. That we consider recommendation of approval of special land use for medical marijuana to city council.
We have. Is there support? I was.
I took our consider?
Yeah.
One of order. Consider recommendation of. Okay.
Listen up.
Yeah, I said the right.
That's not for you.
Hold on, so is there is there support?
I support with.
Supported. Well, let's clarify. Alright, what does that? So.
I think we just need to do it over and make sure we do it right.
So we are recommending or the motion, if I understand you correctly, should be recommended approval to city council for a medical marijuana provision to center. Special land.
Yeah.
That's the land use with the six conditions that he had said on the law.
With six commit, the conditions from the planning department.
Right.
Okay.
Based off how the dresses.
Recommendations from the planning.
Recommendations for the six recommendations from the um planning, planning staff.
Are we all on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want, I just wanted to make sure.
Alright.
Alright. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Trump. Mr. Chair, could you just repeat the motion for clarity though, I think you got it, just repeat it so everybody's clear.
Absolutely.
I do respect.
The motion on the floor is for a special land use, recommendation to city council for approval. Of medical marijuana provision center with the six conditions. From the planning department.
Recommendations.
Or recommendations from the planning department.
Yeah, so we did, uh, you just wanted to clear.
Okay, so we move, support it, all in favor? Alright. All opposed? Let the record show that I am voting no and this is why. At this level, I'm confused in the process as why the planning commission is asked to review or vote on something we presently don't have. Which is a medical marijuana license in this case. In the past, I know the applicant stated this was forward thinking and I'm just paraphrasing it. Also, no disrespect to the applicant because they have the right to due process. Another point in these matters regards litigation from a different applicant. And I will speak at that at a city council level and make sure I go over it with our attorney.
I thought that we clarified that we, they did have that.
I'm, I'm talking about something totally different. This isn't anything with your license from the state or nothing like. That involved the city with litigation.
Okay, understood.
And so, so I'll bring that up there, that's why I'm not bringing it up here, but I wanted my note to be stated for the record. That's all.
Understood.
And that was something our planning department pointed out too.
Oh, what, okay, nevermind.
Remember, they're separate now, we got license, we have licenses for, uh, recreation, we have no licenses for medical. In the city of Inkster, there's none out there, and that's why. I did, yeah.
But how come they getting approved, why are they getting approved from, from the, from the local?
That's something that would have to be talked about with our ord- I guess in our ordinances and stuff.
So that goes back to my question, why, why is, why are we having?
Well, you can still push that and see, that's what I'm talking about, you can still push something through, even though the city says we don't have this. If the applicant's paying for it, we give them that right and we process.
But then I asked the question earlier, my question was. Does the app, but the process, and I want, that's why I want to know the licenses process. Did they get the, they go, they said it was, uh, state, local, state. So my thinking was, he has those licenses.
No, no, so you get pre-approved by the state of Michigan, the city is the licensed holder. If the city only created three and they gave them all out, we don't have that, whether they got pre-approved or not. Once they get to that next step again, then they say, well, the city didn't give us approval for this particular license, that, that. They got pre-approved, but that preapproval is dependent upon the city.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God, this is not, this, this is a real, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be. This is, this is unfair to us at planning.
Well, it's un- well, I'll put it this way, I've told Commissioner Faison, when there's certain things that the state mandates, the cities don't have. Main control over it, for instance, adult foster care homes, the cities cannot mandate adult foster care home, the state of Michigan does. So the city of Inkster has an overabundance of them. Now, there's a house bill on the floor that was presented by a Republican and needs bipartisanship support that would grant cities more teeth. In control on the adult foster care home, but right now, when you see residents of our city.
Not a ton of adult foster care homes.
Absolutely, and we can't, we can't regulate. But I don't wanna belabor it, I just wanted that stated for the record.
Okay.
And so when we get to that particular point, so everybody's understanding.
Uh, can I renege my, um, uh, motion? I'm not clear on that, because that doesn't make sense to me, because I thought I was clear on what I was making a motion on. I'm not clear on the motion anymore.
No, you're.
Not clear on what I just approved, what I recommend.
You're fine, you're, you're fine, that was not to confuse you or anything, I was just from where I'm coming from. And I just wanted that stated for the record, the applicant would know, the general public would know.
I mean, we're making a recommendation, but ultimately city.
Can I clarify a little bit? You want me to correct me if I'm wrong? Well, hold on, the motion is passed, I'm, and I'm sorry. Vote, voting right now, so.
We had four gays in one day and there's only five of us here, so is it? Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so it does pass, okay, I, I apologize.
Well, come on.
Alright, let's, let's, let's move.
So now, there is the site plan review, the floor is open for a motion. To approve the site plan review. For case number twenty-one dash nineteen, and that's all three, adult use marijuana retailer, medical marijuana provision center and drive-through restaurant.
We just did that. Oh, that's the site plan. Okay. Make a motion to approve the site plan. For case number twenty-one twenty and twenty-one nineteen.
Well, site plan is just twenty-one nineteen.
Oh, twenty-one nineteen?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve site plan for twenty-one nineteen.
Is there support or discussion? You can say that.
Your part with the conditions.
Support review with, with, uh, you said recommendations of the special land use, that's what you want.
So, okay, let's, let's, this is supported with conditions, let's clarify the motion.
Yeah. I, I'm gonna ask what she wanted.
Okay.
Sure, with the conditions, you just need to just amend your. Your move to include the six conditions for the site plan.
Oh, that's right, I didn't leave out the six conditions, right, with the six conditions of the site plan, that's right.
So the motion is.
Based off how the.
You recommend approval for site plan review, case number twenty-one dash nineteen. With the six recommendations.
The site plan.
From the planning department.
Land department. Plan and review.
And you still support that Commissioner Kane?
Yes.
Alright, so now we're in discussion, I'm gonna go to Attorney Jones first and then I'll come to you, Mr. Goreflop.
Yeah, questionable.
I, I thought, I had saw your hand go up, I'm sorry.
Before the motion, I, I thought you were gonna go back to the drive-through restaurant, cause you split the three up, but you already got a motion on the floor, so.
Yeah, we split the three up, um, because the drive-through restaurant didn't need the special land use, this is part of the site plan. Mr. Goreflop.
This is clarification. Uh, I'm just up here to make sure I can hear everybody.
Okay. Yep, so Commissioner Davis made the motion, Commissioner Kane supported it, we're in discussion. Is there any? Here or none, all in favor?
Alright.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number C. Case number is twenty-one dash nineteen, special land use and twenty-one nineteen, site plan review, adult use marijuana retailer. Review and consider recommendation of approval of a special land use request to city council. And approval of a site plan for a retail marijuana establishment in the B three. General Business District at three zero 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 seven Michigan Avenue, Danny Hader is the applicant, Mr. Goreflop.
Um, so if you recall, this is an existing facility that the applicant intends to rehab and dress up and. And, uh, improve on the site and their intention is for, give me one second. Uh, an adult use retail, uh, facility at this site. Uh, I'm gonna go through the special land use, uh, recommendations or review first. Um, there again, there's a, it's quite lengthy, um, but I'll cut right to the chase with the recommendation. Um, again, the recommendation is very similar for the special land use with, uh, that was for the previous, previous one. Uh, there's six conditions, uh, one is the approval of the site plan. Two, uh, a security plan that's approved by the city of Inkster Police Department. Uh, three, provide details pertaining to the air filtration and odor mitigation measures. Uh, four, no smoking signs be placed conspicuously across the property. Uh, five, uh, provision of documentation that the site is open for inspection and six approval. Uh, by any other required, uh, reviewing body or agency. Uh, so we are recommending, uh, approval of the special land use for this particular site. Uh, be, um, approved and recommended to council.
Alrighty, thank you, commissioners, any questions?
Uh, does it total tear down and rebuild or?
No, it's a, an existing facility that they're gonna rehab. So the building itself is gonna stay in the exact same location, it's just gonna get, you know, a fresh face on it.
Alright.
No.
New, new parking, new driveway, new landscaping, all of that kinda stuff.
Yeah, pos- new parking and stuff, and also wouldn't have been no landscaping, the buffer zone. A thousand feet buffer zone is that we look into.
At, at this point, we don't, we're not looking at the buffer di- distances at this point. Would, would it be within a thousand feet of some of the other proposed ones? Yes. But that's not the issue that we're talking about at this point during the process.
Alright. Any further questions, commissioners?
Cause they could actually deny it at some point later on.
Yes.
If that was to be an issue.
Correct.
And again, this is talking about what you said, medical.
Well, this. Adult use retailer. And I, you know, I wish the state had made things a lot simpler, so I didn't get all hung up and tongue twisted on the. Terminology, but. They, they've, they've made it very specific that certain terms apply to medical uses. And certain terms apply to adult use or recreational uses. And you need to be very specific when you're describing those, so that everybody knows exactly what's going on. Um, it, but for a person or people that aren't dealing with this on a day-to-day basis, I can understand how it just becomes. Uh, all jumbled up.
But we do know that the applicant has done his due diligence and making sure that he's done what he's supposed to do up until this point.
That's correct. And our responsibility as a, as a, as a planning commission is to. Assuming that they meet the criteria and the standards for a special land use. And assuming that they meet the criteria for site plan review, that we make that recommendation to council. For them to then opine upon and, uh, either allow or not to move forward in the next step after that.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioner Daniels, before we turn over to the rest of the commission? Alright, commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Goreflop before we address the applicant, if they're here? Here or none, alright, thank you, Mr. Goreflop, if the applicant is here for, or a representative on the applicant's behalf, please approach and state your name for the record.
Thank you so much, Sujit Hamad, I'm their attorney.
Commissioners, did you have any questions for the attorney on behalf of the applicant? You say you do?
No, I'm saying they asked.
Oh, okay, um, did you have anything additional for us, ma'am?
I did think that, um, you asked a very valuable question earlier and, um, I just wanted to, um, answer, maybe shed some light. There is a very simple legal solution, um, to.
Can you raise your voice just a little bit?
Oh, yes, of course, thank you, there is a very simple legal solution, uh, to the issue involving the, the buffer zone, so long as. The ordinance is amended ahead of time before the applicants, uh, go to obtain their certificate of occupancy, it would apply to them. And if, um, if the desire is not to remove the buffer, the other way around, it would be to, um, to amend of the. Amend the zoning ordinance to include a provision that says that if the two applicants agree or are. Uh, comfortable being within a thousand feet of one another, then, um, the process should move forward. Um, so, so there are very simple solutions to fix that legal issue and, uh, to be completely frank, I've seen other cities. Uh, like, uh, River Rouge, for example, they're a great example of this, where they have all of their marijuana, um, marijuana establishments on one road. And then that limits, uh, where it is, so then that way, there's one area that's dedicated for that. As opposed to having little dispensaries all over the place, everything could be limited to one area, so there's a lot of value in removing that buffer. Um, even though that's not, uh, directly relevant to what you guys are addressing right now, I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case it'll help. Um, with your own, uh, just because this is, it is, it is conflicting, I would, I would be asking the same questions that you are. So I completely understand, I just wanted to shed a little bit of light on that, and if you have any other questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Anything further, commissioners?
Yeah. I reviewed the site plan altogether.
These are two separate votes. Special land use and then it'd be site plan. Alright, no further questions for the representative on behalf of the applicant. Floor is open for a motion.
So I move that we review and consider, I'm sorry, that we consider recommendation, recommendation of approval. Of a special land use request to city council regarding case number twenty-one nineteen, special land use. With the. Uh, recommendations from, um, planning.
Support.
Has been properly moved by Commissioner Daniels and supported by Commissioner Williams, is there any further discussion?
Is it?
Yes.
Twenty-one dash twenty?
Oh, I should have just said twenty-one.
Right.
You know, oh, no, yeah, right, yeah, that's why twenty-one nineteen.
Yeah.
Oh, this is, so we're doing a special land use, so it should be twenty-one dash twenty.
Yeah.
What, item C?
Right, it says.
Oh, do we have a typo?
Yeah. Okay, cause that, okay, is that the typo?
Mr. Goreflop, should that be twenty-one nineteen and twenty-one nineteen, or should it be two separate case numbers?
Oh, yeah, see that.
We just, we can't get, uh.
You know, I think that is twenty-one nineteen, I think the one at the top is the typo, so the one at the top should be twenty-one dash twenty and, oh.
The letter says twenty.
I, I was curious, is it an issue that it's the same exact, um, numbers with the ones of the case above it, cause then they don't have like a unique identifier?
Right, because. I think that's the typo, it should not.
That's, that's what he's investigating right now.
Right.
So I don't have an accurate, uh, description of the actual. Project numbers for each of these, I'm not, I think they've both gotten confused, so I'm not sure which one is nineteen and twenty. Because I think there's twenty-one and twenty-two also, um, I can. Run real quick into the planning office and see if I can figure this out, otherwise you could simply make the motion by address. Uh, to move the projects forward and have reference by, uh, project number.
And the address, okay, it's three zero 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 seven Michigan?
Correct.
So we are in discussion, so we can amend the motion, like you said, to make it by address to move the project forward.
Yeah.
And then that way, uh, planning staff can dive into it and make the necessary corrections.
Correct.
Let's go ahead and amend your motion.
Oh, okay, I amend the motion and move that we, um, uh, uh.
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval of special land use. Request to city council, address three zero zero seven Michigan Avenue. For adult use marijuana retailer with the recommended. Conditions per city, uh, I'm sorry, planning, um, yes.
Alright, then move and support the discussion, Commissioner Davis.
My question, can we add, based off how the project addresses the standards listed in the zoning ordinance for each? Can we add that to it, uh? Based on how the project addresses the standard listed in the zoning ordinance.
Would you like to add that to your motion?
I don't think I understand.
What, what he's suggesting is that, uh, it's a, it's a fact of, or a finding of fact. That you're stating that you're recommending approval of the special land use. Based on the review of the planning staff and the conditions listed therein. And that it meets the ordinance. And the conditions listed therein and that it meets the ordinance requirements for the approval of a special land use as outlined in the ordinance.
Okay, absolutely, yes.
And do you still support that? Alright, it's been amended, amended. Supported. Is there any further discussion or amendments to the motion that is on the floor? Hearing none, all in favor? All the polls? Motion passed. Floor is open for a motion. For approval of the site plan review. Anybody going once?
Hey, but the site plan of you gotta be the three thousand seven Michigan Avenue, right?
Thirty thousand seven.
Site make a motion, I make a motion to approve the we review and considered the site plan. At three zero zero seven Michigan Avenue. Attaining with the six site plan conditions. And we have that based on that one there too.
Yeah, in this particular case, the um. Site plan review for this facility has a few more site or a few more conditions which I didn't talk about yet. So I could do that during discussion.
Okay, is there support for discussion? Alright, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Davis and supported by Commissioner Daniels. Mr. Gornfloh, go ahead.
Sure. So in reviewing the revised site plans that we received from the applicant, they have addressed several of the items that we've uh mentioned. There are still some items that are outstanding, um, most of which obviously are fairly minor, otherwise we wouldn't be recommending approval at this point. Uh, they could be dealt with at final site plan when we're doing our checklist to make sure that those all get taken care of. Uh, but there's nine conditions. First of which is the existing window configuration uh on the building. Is approximately sixteen percent of the front facade where the ordinance requires thirty percent. So. We could do one of two things. We could either have the planning commission grant a waiver for the reduction of the. Fourteen percent or so uh to allow the existing condition to be maintained. Or we should ask that they upgrade the window configuration on the front of the facade to thirty percent. Now. Here's my. Right, just brief opinion on that is that in most cases, most retailers in the marijuana industry wanna have as little visibility of the front of their building as possible. Because it's more difficult to maintain security and things like that with the larger number of model windows. So. Or in this particular case, for this particular use, I believe a waiver would be warranted to allow that reduction down to sixteen percent. That's just my opinion. So we can go either way with that one depending on what the planning commissioners would like to see. Um, second one is a um. Uh, some landscaping requirements that need to be met. The third one again is a waiver for the uh reduction of the um. Proposed off-street loading space from uh ten by seventy to ten by thirty five. There's another couple other landscaping things which are. It relatively inconsequential. Um, there is an existing accessory building on the site. Um, which is not going to be utilized for any use associated with the retail operation. Of the the marijuana business itself. These folks are uh tenants of this building and the landlord of the property is wishing to retain. Uh, control and ownership of that accessory building in the back to house lawn care equipment, that sort of things. Uh, so that he can keep that stuff on site and doesn't have to haul it back and forth. So it just needs to be understood that that accessory building is not related to the use that's being proposed. It's not related to the site plan. And that it is for the use of the landlord or property owner itself and not the tenants of the the project. There was some phrasing on the construction documents that needed to be changed. There was still a reference to micro business, which isn't accurate. Uh, and then the last two are things you've heard me say before about uh security plan review and uh other agency comments and conditions. So there's a total of nine conditions in this particular one, but all of them are minor.
Commissioners.
You need it?
No, I have something said that just struck with me, it's his opinion that he gave.
Was it the windows?
Yes.
Right, right, and then that's a lot to that.
So would that need to be added into the language or is that something based off of the recommendations from plan at once approved, it would be?
Yeah, so because the way the recommendation or the condition is written in our report, it's a either or. And so we would need it from the planning commission uh direction saying that we agree with the reduction. Or we still would like the thirty percent windows and the facade.
Need a separate motion for that?
No, I think you can just, it's a, it's a motion to approve with the following conditions, including. Sixteen percent or thirty percent windows and a waiver for the loading space.
And your recommendation was to grant them the waiver.
Yes.
On the, on the fact that uh uh facilities normally like to keep the not so note.
That's correct. And and I can almost guarantee, and I'm not gonna speak for them, but I can almost guarantee that if they do have. Glass on the front of the building, it will be blacked out from the inside so they can't see into the windows, which sort of defeats the purpose of having windows in the first place. But the intention, I believe, for the thirty percent windows. Was in the uh business districts where you were having retail operations where you want people to be able to see into your store and see your products. And see all of those sorts of things, but this is a different type of retail operation.
But there is an aesthetic value to having, that was my thing too. Yeah, I mean, it's, it doesn't have to be to be able to see in. There is, you know, it is. Pleasing to have.
True, however, have you looked at the facade details for this particular application? Because I actually think the the existing facade of the building actually is pretty good looking. Yeah, I think it looks pretty nice to begin with. And I think if you change the window configuration, it's gonna change the character of the architecture. As opposed to the way it is now, which looks like it always designed to go together. But I, I, I do understand what you're talking about.
Alright, Commissioners?
But that, but that still, that still kinda satisfies. Commissioners phase on concern about that, the the set of the building, that it still will look nice. Even though we're saying, hey, we don't want it to be open like, it's still gonna be nice and pretty.
That's correct, yep.
With the thirty percent. Windows, how are they gonna fix it up to make it? But they gotta have it up or down, whether the up is somewhere around it.
Yeah, I don't know how they would, what they would propose to increase the windows up front. Um, whether it's take the existing windows and make them bigger or adding more windows to it or. Separate windows that are something different and a different shape. I I don't know exactly how they would address that.
Okay, we'll see that in the cycling.
Well, we would, except if you grant the waiver and allow them to keep the windows as they are right now at the sixteen percent as opposed to the thirty percent. Then they're not gonna provide any additional information with regard to the front elevation.
Right, because what he's saying is that it's normally should be thirty.
Correct.
But it's right now, as it stands, it's sixteen percent. And you're saying that it's okay because of the, what they're using it for.
Correct.
And that's what.
And 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 let me back up, so. This recommendation is for this special land use and this site plan only. So if for some reason they were to come in and say, we wanna redo our whole building. Or we wanna add a whole new building, or we wanna do something different altogether. You have another opportunity to come back and say, well, we understood that we granted you this waiver for the sixteen percent on this building. But we really wanna see thirty percent at least on this addition or this new building, or if you tear it down and build something new, we wanna see that thirty percent. Correct. So the waiver that you're granting is only for this very specific application.
Since we're talking about aesthetics. So there are some things on the plan that are kinda hard to read um electronically. And I know we looked at the physical copy last time and I can't recall. If if you can kinda speak to like what you can see from the plans from like what's, what the design. Like the planned design, cause uh. As long as it doesn't end up looking like what it looks like now, I think it needs to be improved.
Right, no, I I agree with that.
Complete remodel or just face? Okay, cause there's a difference.
Not gonna look the way it looks now.
Okay.
And it's gonna be all new concrete and all that, so it's gonna look much more landscaping as well.
Okay, so the the material will be stone? Okay.
It'll look like on your building. Technically.
And I need to just wanna add that it's actually better to have less windows um on the front of the building because then you um, it's. There it, there's a less likelihood that uh residents or um, you know, people who are not of age are gonna come yeah and hear and. Better with dispensaries. To have it blocked off. And even if there are windows, generally with dispensaries, they'll be with, they'll cover it with posters and whatnot to make, to make sure people aren't, you know, peering in and.
We passed that part in, well.
Hold on one second. Anything further, Commissioner Pason? Alright, Commissioner Davis.
Instruction there was a gas station. Tank still in the ground?
No.
Tank smooth?
No, this isn't.
Oh, they're building, they're building there right now.
The tire, oh.
We're talking about thirty thousand seven Michigan Avenue, the blue building on Michigan Avenue.
Set back, it's set back off the road. On the south side.
Oh, the Blue House?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so everything west of, east of, uh, west of Michigan, okay, I got it, yeah. Okay. I thought this time about the tire place, somewhere where did I see tire place at?
That was the previous application.
Oh, we passed him already. Alright, let's roll on with this here.
Take us back now.
Stuck at the tire place.
Alrighty.
Okay.
Any further questions for discussion, Commissioner? Any more clarity on that recommendation about the window? Alrighty. And we were in discussion, so all in favor? In favor, all the polls? Motion passes. Alrighty, we're down to new business and we don't have any unless I have the wrong agenda. Oh, down to miscellaneous. Anything miscellaneous, guys? So Commissioner Kane and Commissioner Davis.
I could ask the city attorney a question at this point. So, the process the way it is now, for these type of facilities. Are we documenting this a possible risk that they are incurring every time that they pay more money for the next step? And they may be denied whatsoever. Are we documenting that?
That's, that's one of the issues been discussed with planning and the administration. And I think you guys received a memo from our, from the planning department and read. It was a recommendation on there to. Um, add to the procedure, how we advise future applicants. So answer, long answer is yes.
That would be one of the things that's added is an actual sign off.
Correct.
Anything additional, Commissioner, uh, uh, Kane? Alright, thank you, Commissioner Davis.
The site plan that we just did, did we grant the waiver for the windows? Or that's already in it?
Yes.
I I have a miscellaneous item.
Right ahead.
Um, so, um. We have an ad hoc committee that is looking to do several things, including having a um, one training with. City council and other development facing boards and commissions. Um, I sent an email sometime back just making sure. Um, that we could consider August eighth as the date that we would do that, as it would require some coordination with. Um, our redevelopment ready communities planner, um, Elizabeth, to be able to present. Um, and it's really important that we have like a good runway of time to be able to plan for that, getting save the dates out, getting um, starting to design. The facilitation for that um meeting and a whole host of other things that need to happen um in preparation for that. So I just wanna be clear. So I don't, I don't know if we really established like what the protocols are, but are we comfortable with proceeding as August eighth, the date that we wanna work with? Um, to secure the RRC planner, um, and then get the save the dates out to all of the respective boards.
And that's for the persons who are on the ad hoc committee, right? Are you asking that too?
Well, really, the whole commission, I feel like that. I don't think we, I don't know if we have the authority to set the date, so I just wanna make sure um that we are supportive of August eighth as the date.
Well, as you know, in our last meeting or one of the prior meetings, we voted to just have meetings on the. Fourth Monday of the month. So that Monday is open, cause it's a planning, it would normally be a planning commission Monday and to my not, we haven't called for any special meetings right now.
Okay.
So I'm fine with it, you know, just as, as a consensus, I know we're not voting on that, but everybody else, you can chime in.
Well, you can just correct me if I'm wrong, but tonight is considered a special meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the special meeting was we got to these two things, so I was gonna be, and we have a special meeting. You wanna speak on the specific things that we came here for, so I don't know if that's.
Well, we're not voting on it, that's just under miscellaneous.
I didn't know.
So it's just a discussion. I mean, we don't have to answer here, anybody can just reach out to her.
We're on miscellaneous. It's a miscellaneous item. It's not a, I just.
It's not action, man.
Right. What's wrong? Okay.
Alright, well, everybody keep that in the back of your mind then. And I guess just follow on that inquiry that was sent out.
And our, we're meeting this week too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Um, well, there's any, are there any more miscellaneous from this body? Hearing none, we are down to second hearing of the public. This is for items not scheduled for. Okay, it's just doubled, I think that needs to be presented one day. Um, this is the portion where the general public have an opportunity to speak about agenda items. Or I'm sorry, about items that weren't necessarily on the agenda that you wanted to voice to the planning commission. Um, feel free to approach the podium. I'm going too fast. Feel free to approach the podium at this time and state your name for the record.
Andrew Wathlin, resident. Uh, earlier in the meeting, I was accused of asking for personal finances of the applicant. That was a lie. What I asked for was where they were in the process financially, all those. That's what I asked for. So I wanna make sure that everyone understands I have no interest. In their personal finances. I wanted to know what they had spent so far, and I believe that's for you, but was it not?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Uh, anyone else?
Just would like to get verification on the record, or my, yeah, uh, on behalf of uh. Uh, Buds here, for case, uh, for motions for recommendation of case numbers twenty one dash twenty and twenty one dash nineteen, which is six B in this agenda. I wanna clarify if these numbers. I want to clarify if these numbers are incorrect, if we can. Uh, refer to two nine two two five dash two nine two four five Michigan Avenue. Um, in those motions when they're written, please, and maybe have some sort of. Discussion on the record, that's the way they're gonna be.
Um, the address on her.
Yeah. In case they're wrong, I don't know if they are. Yep, Mr. Gornflow is taking note of that.
Yep.
To ensure that when they correct those case numbers. The addresses are with the correct case numbers.
Was, was the question whether we need to make the correction now?
No.
Oh.
No.
He just wants, he said he just want to make sure the address.
That we have the record, yeah, okay.
All righty, because we did, yeah. All righty, um. Is there anyone else from the general public that wishes to speak to the body at this time? Hearing none, floor is open for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
What?
They're properly moved by Commissioner Davis and supported by Commissioner Daniels. All in favor?
Aye.
All the polls can say, um, time is eight forty-nine PM. This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.